Hello and welcome to the beautiful Bailey Center Auditorium on the grounds of Wallace State College in Hansville. Thank you to our gracious hosts, Wallace State College and Dr. Vicky Karlowix. The 2025 Tribune Debate Series and Q. Question and Answer Forums continue today with municipal elections. More specifically, the Hansville Municipal Elections. These events are designed to give the public more unfiltered answers without the questions ahead of time. Direct comparisons and meaningful conversation. Today, we focus on candidates running for council place one, three, four, and the mayor. But now, we move on to place three with Kim Newman Brown, Joe Twiss, and Elena Kennedy-Entrickin. With all that being said, we'll get on with it with rules. Rules for candidates: no electronic devices permitted. Questions will alternate, so no candidate will always answer the first question first or last. Opening statement is limited to 60 seconds and may be a prepared statement. Time allotted per question is two minutes. Closing statement is 90 seconds and must be spoken without notes. One rebuttal per question, but only if a candidate calls out the other and is set for 45 seconds. Facts only, no accusations without proof. This will allocate additional time to your opponent. Voters deserve substance over slogans. Talking points won't be enough, so let's begin. We will begin with Ms. Elena Entrickin. Is that correct? Okay, we'll start. Question one: city challenges. What's the biggest challenge facing your area of the city right now, and how would you tackle it?
I think the biggest challenge that we're facing right now is transparency in the government. And I think the best way to tackle that is to have everything in a place where our citizens can access all of the information that they so desire. I believe that we should stream our council meetings. They should have papers that we are going over, our agenda. All of those things should be accessible to all of the citizens in Hansville. And I believe that they should be allowed to ask us any questions that they have. We should be an open book. I mean, we are here to work for the citizens of Hansville. That is literally the statement of the job. It is to work for the citizens of Hansville, and they should have a say in what we are doing.
All right, thank you so much. We will move on to candidate Kim Brown. The same question: what's the biggest challenge facing your area of the city right now, and how would you tackle it?
The biggest challenge facing the city of Hansville right now is public safety. People want our police department back. They want it back in a way that's transparent. And our citizens aren't feeling as safe as they did. They should feel safe in their homes, when they're driving on our streets, when they go shopping. Our businesses should feel safe. They should not worry about break-ins or vandalism happening in their businesses. While I am extremely grateful to Sheriff Gentry for what he has done for us, it's not enough. It doesn't protect our citizens as well as our own department will. And I fully believe that when our department is back up and running, it will be back up and running with very qualified officers who've been extremely vetted. It will be running with new rules and policies and procedures in place. It will also have disciplinary policies in place that will be regularly followed with work evaluations in a regular manner. And I think that will make us stronger and better and more able to protect our citizens and give them what they deserve here in Hansville.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Joe Twiss. The same question: what's the biggest challenge facing your area of the city right now, and how would you tackle it?
Well, our biggest issue... is this mic on?
Yes, ma'am, you just have to...
All right. The biggest issue actually facing us is public safety and accountability, both within the council and within the police department. When we rebuild the police department, and we will be rebuilding the police department, we need to do it differently than it was done in the past. We need to find people that are qualified. For example, the police chief needs to be somebody who has come up through the ranks in their own department, who is next in line for the police chief in their department, and is looking to move up but can't in their department. And all the police officers that we hire need to be, what, 100% vetted before they ever spend a day on the force. And accountability, you know, there needs to be that accountability within the police department and the oversight from the council members to make sure that the police department does not become corrupt again.
Thank you so much for that answer. And we'll move on to question number two. Kim, you will be first on this one. This is citizen input. What specific ways would you gather feedback from residents before voting on major issues?
I'd like to echo something Elena talked about, which is having all of our meetings online and streamed, having all of our agendas and previous minutes posted online so that our citizens can see what's going on and ask questions. I do believe that we should reinstate the committees that we once had. The committees are headed by a council person for each different committee, but it also has two to three citizens on that committee, which gives them input into things like public safety, the street department, parks and rec, the budget. All those things need to be out where the citizens can participate. I also think that we need to have a state-of-the-city address every year where each department head talks about what they've accomplished in the year, what they want to accomplish in the new year. And I also think we need to have two community forums every year where it's open to all of our citizens so that they can come, ask questions, and have those questions answered by a department head, the mayor, or the council so that they know what's going on and don't feel like they're in the dark.
Thank you for answering. Joe, we'll move on to you. Your mic is a little sensitive, so you will have to hold it up just a little bit higher. The same question. We are looking at... What specific ways would you... wait. Yes, I'm sorry. Citizen input: what specific ways would you gather feedback from residents before voting on major issues?
Okay, first of all, the council meetings need to be moved to a time when your average citizen can attend them. Most citizens have a nine-to-five. The council meetings are held at 5:00 o'clock. There's no way that they can be there. Their agendas need to be posted online well in advance of the meeting so that the citizens can review them and do their research on what's coming up on the issues. And at that point, they can come to the meetings, they can stand up, speak up, and have a voice. We don't need them to think, "Well, oh my gosh, you know, I have to watch it online." Because if you're just watching it online, you don't have a say in what's going on. You can't stand up and speak up if you're just watching it online. And you can't, you know, they can't show up at the meetings or at 5:00 o'clock. So those meetings need to be pushed out. We need to have the agendas posted online well in advance of the meeting so that citizens can see them. And we need to have the minutes from the prior meetings posted online so that the citizens can actually do their research on how you voted in the past.
All right, thank you so much for that answer. And we will move on to Elena. Same question: what specific ways would you gather feedback from residents before voting on major issues?
I will go and echo a little bit of what Ms. Kim Brown said. I think community forums would be such a good thing made at a time, you know, that citizens can attend, where they can come and they can present their questions and their concerns to us or the mayor or whoever it is. And they can ask those specific things. And we can kind of have a group discussion about the upcoming, you know, important things that are being voted on. I will 100% advocate for agendas being posted online. It is so important for our citizens to see what we're looking at, what we're trying to accomplish, what we're discussing during our meetings. I agree that they should be able to come and speak up. And if they have questions and if they have concerns, we should be willing to listen to them. I think that there also could be definitely committees that have citizens on them so they can submit those concerns on that committee. That committee head can kind of put it into a whole, you know, group thing and be like, "Look, this is the concerns I'm hearing from the people that I'm actively talking with on a daily basis."
All right, thank you all for those answers. And we will move on to question number three with neighborhood safety. Joe, you will start first on this one. What initiatives would you propose to improve public safety in the area?
Well, first of all, we need to rebuild the police department. Because with, you know, Hansville is growing. Whether we like it or not, Hansville's growing. And we're going to need our own police department. The initiatives are building a police department that we can trust. You know, it doesn't do us any good to have a police department that's not on the up and up. So the initiatives would be basically just to rebuild our police department, make sure it's functioning, make sure it's, you know, they're being honest and open and doing their job and not just sitting out doing speeding tickets. They need to be policing, they need to be interacting with the citizens. You know, they need to be checking on the businesses. They need to be open so that citizens can feel, you know, comfortable going in and sitting down and chatting with the police department.
Thank you so much. Elena, we'll move to you. Same question: what initiatives would you propose to improve public safety in the area?
I think it's going to have to start with transparency across the board. We're going to need to be more open and more transparent as an entire unit of municipal government. Ms. Twiss made really, really good points about the police department needing to be built from the ground up. And there need to be trainings and vettings 1,000% for our police officers before they ever even work on the force. There needs to be leadership, someone established in the law enforcement community who has been a leader and can come in and lead our police department once that gets rebuilt. But I really believe that it starts with transparency across the board. We need to be open about the decisions we're making in hiring the people for the police department so that our citizens have trust in their government officials again. Because I feel like that's one thing that Hansville is lacking severely, is they don't trust the people who are in the government right now and who are in leadership positions. Once we reestablish that trust with our citizens, it becomes a little bit smoother to transition to rebuilding the police department and making sure they're checking on businesses and the businesses and the homes, you know, people feel safe again. But it really starts with just rebuilding that trust.
All right, thank you for that answer. Kim, we'll move to you. Same question: what initiatives would you propose to improve public safety in the area?
Obviously, rebuilding the police department is first and foremost. However, we also need to remember that our fire department runs so many calls, and they have to write grants for so many of their resources. We need to make sure that they're well-funded, that they have everything they need. Our fire department, you know, does advanced life support. We need to, you know, celebrate what they've done and how they have grown, but we need to make sure they have all the things they need. They train other departments. We need to make sure that that continues and that we grow partnerships with other communities and other fire departments, the same as we will the police department. I know the city of Coleman has offered, when we reestablish our police department, to help us do any training that we need so that we don't have to go off and pay to train somewhere else. Obviously, we have to follow the letter of the law and make sure that all our officers are APOST certified, that they have complete background checks, and that they are the very best. If they have ever been let go from a department, they don't have a place in ours. We need to make sure that we give our citizens the very best. We also need to make sure our parks are safe, make sure that they're well-lit, and that their officers patrol in them when the police department is back. Public safety entails so much. We need to make sure that we address all those pieces.
All right, thank you for that answer. We will move on to question four. Elena, we'll begin with you. This is on local business support. How would you help small businesses in the area thrive while also encouraging new investment?
Well, I think that begins with bringing more people to our area. I know that if you begin to pour into the parks and making sure that those are safe and they are well-maintained and they're good environments, then you bring in so much when you do that. You bring in people, you bring in revenue. And when you do that, that helps our local businesses. It helps our local restaurants, our local shops, it helps all of them. And I think that the way that we continue to help our local businesses while also increasing growth is just by really increasing the amount of people that are here and just helping them with maintaining their safety, making sure they're safe, making sure it's a good environment that people want to be in, and helping to drive people to those businesses. In order to drive people to your businesses, you have to bring people into your city. And to do that, you have to have safety, you have to have well-maintained parks and rec, you have to have all of those things. So I think it's just like a tiered option. Once we start doing those things and bringing more people in, it's going to help our small businesses tremendously. And then, you know, you can start reaching out to other businesses to bring them into Hansville.
All right, thank you for that answer. Kim, we will move on to you. Same question: how would you help small businesses in the area thrive while also encouraging new investment?
I think obviously we have to support the small businesses we have. We have to continue investing in them as a city. We have to support the festivals and things that they bring in, and we have to do more of those things. We have to make sure that our parks are available for festivals. We have to support our downtown. Nolan has done an amazing job investing in the downtown and building it up, and we need to continue to do that. And we need to find other people who want to do that. We need to have a police department that's community-present and that's present with our businesses, that go in and talk to the people that are there, that talk to them, get to know them, bring those people together. We need to use our planning commission and our industrial development board to seek out new businesses so that they come into our city. And of course, we need to have the tax incentives ready when some of these businesses come to ensure that they come and that they stay.
Thank you. We will move on to Joe. Same question: how would you help small businesses in your area thrive while also encouraging new investment?
No, it's interesting. I've talked to a couple of small business owners because I would love to see all of the buildings in downtown Hansville filled with small, local-owned businesses. And I've talked to several small business owners and said, "You know, why not Hansville? Why can't you come to Hansville?" And what I continually get back from them is lack of traffic. Well, I would love to build it, you know, have my business in Hansville, but there's a lack of traffic. So what we need to do is take a step back and figure out, how are we going to get that traffic into Hansville? How are we going to get that traffic to stop instead of driving through Hansville? And, you know, like with the festivals, where we have those festivals. I look at them, and they're like one or two streets. We need to expand those festivals so that when people are driving down 31, that they decide they want to stop and attend these festivals and not just the local people in Hansville. And it wouldn't help if we actually gave, you know, rebates or betment, you know, tax advantages, I guess, I don't know what the word is, to local businesses, small businesses, to get them to want to come to Hansville. But, you know, literally, we just need to figure out how to get traffic to stop and shop in Hansville versus driving on through to Coleman, you know. And, you know, I would love to see a couple of small-owned restaurants, you know, here in Hansville because I don't cook, you know. And I'm getting pretty tired of having to drive to Coleman every time I want to go out to eat. And we've got a couple of empty restaurants here. If we could just get some small, you know, some chef that wants to make this a destination... and I know that sounds silly, but a destination place to come for this chef's food.
All right, thank you all for those answers. And we will move on to question five. Kim, we will begin with you. This is on public works oversight. How will you monitor and advocate for quality in road, sidewalk, and drainage projects in the area?
I think, first of all, I want to say that our public works department over the last several years has done a great job. If you look at all the sidewalk projects they've undertaken, if you look at the ditching they did going up Highway 31 to make that area safer. The director of the public works gives the council a detailed report every council meeting of what has been done so that we know what he is doing. But there are streets and things that we need to focus on. We're waiting for the bid to be let for the 3191 turn lane. That is a desperate need that we have been working on for the last couple of years. There are streets like Elm Street that need to be paved. We had to work on the bridge that's by the civic center. There are lots of things that we need to look at. As a council member, if I am the council member that is the liaison with public works, I can talk to them and find out what's going on. But as one council member, I can't tell public works to do anything. That would be an ethics violation. So we have to make sure that we are connected to the people that are in that department and that we can ask questions and that we know what's going on. And we need to ask the citizens what priorities are. And that is why the sidewalks were built. People wanted a sidewalk where they could get on the sidewalk close to Wallace and come downtown or go from downtown all the way to the grocery store and be safe. And I think we've accomplished that.
All right, thank you for that answer. And we will move on to Joe. Same question: how will you monitor and advocate for quality in road, sidewalk, and drainage projects in the area?
Well, we can look for grants to begin with so that we can get more accomplished without using the taxpayers' dollars. But I will say that I think that they've done a pretty good job so far in Hansville. I call Hansville a walkable community because there's so many sidewalks where you can walk. Streets need to be paved, though, and that's something where I think right now we have a grant to upgrade the sewer system, and we can look for grants to upgrade, you know, the roads, to get the roads paved and to add more sidewalks, you know. Because there's a couple of side streets I walk on that don't have sidewalks, you know, and you have to walk out on the road. But I personally think that the department's doing a great job of what they're doing with what they have. We just need to look for grants, that's all, you know. Basically, just get somebody out there and let's sort of start figuring out how we can get more money into the city to spend on that.
Thank you for that answer. And we will move on to Elena. Same question: how will you monitor and advocate for quality in road, sidewalk, and drainage projects in the area?
Well, it goes back to creating relationships. I think that you have to have a good relationship with the public works department and the head of the department. You have to be able to, like Ms. Brown said, ask questions and kind of discuss with them where they're at, what they're doing. You know, the detailed list of what's been accomplished every council meeting is an amazing thing to have. And I also think that you need citizen input. If they feel like their road has, you know, more potholes and things like that, there should be a community forum where they can come and they can let us know so that we're aware of that. So then we can go back to the public works department and be like, "Hey, let's have a chat about how we can fix this and what we can do." Ms. Twiss is right, we can look for more grants for it. We can also look at the budget and see if there's any way possible, you know, to add things in or take things away, which one, you know, comes priority over the other.
Thank you for that answer. And we will move on with Joe with question number six regarding prioritizing limited funds. If the city budget couldn't cover all proposed projects, what decision-making process would you use to set priorities?
Can you repeat that question?
Yes, ma'am. If the city budget couldn't cover all proposed projects, what decision-making process would you use to set priorities?
First of all, you set priorities based on the needs of the citizens. Number one is going to be public safety, you know. Number two, I would say, is the infrastructure. Then you just kind of trickle down to what's the last thing that you need. You know, you need your roads, you need, you know, you need your utilities, you need the public safety. What you don't need, you know, you do need, but what can be put last is things like parks and recreations, you know. And I know that sounds bad because there's so many people that have children here. But if you're looking at, I only have X number of dollars and how can I best spend it? You need those high-ticket items first, you know, the ones that are going to affect all of the citizens, you know, the most and not the ones that are just going to affect some of the citizens some of the time.
Thank you for that answer. And we'll move on to Elena. Same question: if the city budget couldn't cover all proposed projects, what decision-making process would you use to set priorities?
Well, as one council member, there's not a whole lot you can do by yourself. I think that first, the decision-making process needs to include everyone who's involved. The entire council needs to sit down, the mayor, even heads of departments possibly need to be in on this discussion so that we can see what exactly needs are for each department. Because there may be something you can cut out of one department and cut out of another department that, you know, will bring in extra funds for something that we deem super important. Public safety obviously is super important to the town, the business owners, the residents here. So that is going to be at the top of that list. But I also think that we need to be considerate of the next generation coming underneath us because we're trying to make a foundation for them. This is not just about us, this is about the future of Hansville. This is about the people coming up, and those people are our children and other people's children. So I think that if we invest in our children and if we invest in everyone else's children, we're investing in the next generation, we're investing in the people coming into Hansville. We're investing in the people who want to put roots down here and who want to start that business here and who, you know, want to run for city council here, who want to, you know, raise their children here. So, I mean, and it might just mean my own personal belief, but I think we definitely need to emphasize on public safety. But I also think that it's a group effort. It's going to take everyone on the council with all of their ideas coming together as one and saying, "Hey, look, here's what I think is priority, here's what you think is priority, here's what, you know, the mayor thinks is priority. How can we come together and make sure that all of these priorities are getting met with whatever the budget is that we have?"
Thank you for that answer. And we'll move on to Kim. Same question: if the city budget couldn't cover all proposed projects, what decision-making process would you use to set priorities?
First of all, I want to say I'm having a very proud teacher moment, sitting next to my former student and hearing her answers. What I try to do when the budget is presented and what I think we have tried to do in the past, we ask the department heads to meet with us when we have the budget presented, and we question them about each line item. It is not pleasant for everyone, it is a very long meeting, it usually takes two meetings. But we ask them, "Can you cut such a percentage?" Instead of saying, "Oh, let's just take all of this out," maybe we can cut percentages from different departments so that we can still meet all the needs. Obviously, public safety is important, Parks and Rec is important, public works is important. But we need to make sure that when we look at cutting the budget, we cut it in a way that is fair to all departments and all citizens, making sure that we cover their needs and making sure that we meet what our requirements are.
Thank you for that. And we will move on to question seven with Elena. This is on growth management. How would you handle a controversial development proposal that residents oppose but could benefit the city financially?
Well, I think that is something that goes back to just being transparent and letting the citizens know, you know, this is...
the citizens know, you know, this is how we think this is going to better our community. Because sometimes you form an opinion based on just, you know, the very initial thought of a development or the very initial projection of a development and you're like, oh, my gosh, no. But then when you sit down and you really talk to the council and they kind of tell you and present to you how this could benefit your community, you, you kind of understand where they're coming from. I think that, that really just goes back to being transparent with our, our citizens. We need them to know where we're coming from and what we think and why we think it's going to benefit our community. And we need to know why they think it wouldn't. I mean, it's a group effort. The city council works with the mayor's office. The mayor and the city council work with the citizens of Hansville. That's what this whole thing is for. So if we're not taking their advice and their concerns to heart, there's a problem there. They need to know where we're coming from and why we think that it's beneficial financially. And we need to know why they think that it wouldn't benefit our community. Because they may have some knowledge that we don't and we may have some knowledge that they don't. And that's just working hand in hand with the citizens of this community so that they feel like they have a voice and a place on the council as well.
Thank you for that answer. Kim, we'll move on to you. Same question. How would you handle a controversial development proposal that residents oppose but could benefit the city financially?
I think, first of all, I'm going to do my research. I'm going to make sure that I understand what the development entails. I want to understand the economic impact, the environmental impact, and I want to understand what the neighbors and the people around the development feel. We hold public hearings so they can come and discuss those issues with us. And we need to be very open and transparent as to why we think this development is good for the city. But we also need to make sure that we check our emotions when we start these projects so that we understand that we're looking at it rationally. We're looking at dollars and cents from the city's side so that we can hear what the citizens have to say. Many people are going to have strong emotions if you want to build something next to their neighborhood. We need to understand why they have those emotions, if there are environmental impacts, if there are traffic impacts, if it's going to make their neighborhood more busy, if it's going to create problems with their children out to play. We need to look at all those things and take all that into consideration and sit down and have conversations with those groups of people who are opposed. And then talk to the developer and say, how do we address these issues? What can we do to alleviate the concerns that the people have so that we can move forward with this development that's going to bring income or people or jobs to our community?
Thank you for your answer. And we'll move on to Joe. Same question. How would you handle a controversial development, how would you handle a controversial development proposal that residents oppose but could benefit the city financially?
Okay, this is where transparency comes in and also with giving the citizens a voice. If, you know, when you're coming in with a new development, you're looking at rezoning that area. And the citizens that should know that this rezoning issue is coming up and they should be able to come in from the very beginning and say, hey, why is this being rezoned? What do you plan on putting there? You know, and then yes, we're for it, no, we're not, let's think about it. How's it going to affect my house and how's it going to affect the roads? How's it going to affect, you know, the, the, you know, the ambiance of the neighborhood? If you're used to having an open field in your backyard and all of a sudden you're going to have a building there, yeah, that's going to affect not only just your house prices, but that's, they need a voice, the citizens need a voice from the very beginning, from when you first start talking to that developer to the rezoning of it, to laying the plans for it. They need to be able to come to the meetings and speak up and let you know how they feel about it. Because I personally wouldn't want a giant development all of a sudden in my back door and I didn't know anything about it at all. So we just need to be a lot more transparent and give the citizens a voice so that they can actually come look and feel that they have a say. That way, you know, they'll, they'll start to understand the city's point of view and the city will start understanding their point of view. And hopefully the, between you, you guys can come, you know, we can come to like a happy medium where the development, okay, we want the development, but the citizens think, well, wait a minute, let's make these changes and then we'll be okay with it. Versus, well, we're going to develop that and surprise, you know, like it or not, it's going to come in, so.
All right. Thank you all for those answers. And we will move on to Kim for question number eight. This is ethics in office. What policies would you support to prevent conflicts of interest for council members?
I think anyone in public service, anyone who's ran for office, you already have to fill out the ethics form and you have to disclose your personal connections, your family's connections, your husband, your children. And I think those policies are great because I don't think we should benefit from our office. We are here to serve the citizens. We are here to make sure that our citizens have everything they need. And with the council and with my job with the state, I have to file that ethics report and I have to attend ethics classes. And it's very important that we understand the least little thing that might be an ethics violation. And if someone is looking at a development that they might have an interest in or that someone in their family might have an interest in, we have to abstain and we have to be very clear as a council who's supporting the developments, who's involved with them so that we know how to vote, so that we know what ethically might be entangled in with it. And I think the state has now made sure, or especially the city of Hansville, we're all going to be given new ethics classes. It's going to be a requirement of the new council and it's going to be a lengthy discussion with the ethics commission. And it's going to be a lengthy process to make sure that we understand all the ethical pieces that are required of a council member and a public servant.
Thank you for that answer. And Joe, same question. It was, what policies would you support to prevent conflicts of interest for council members?
Ethics, funny question. All businesses have ethic, you know, clauses in your contract when you sign them. And it's, it's not just, well, are you going to gain from this development? Or it has more to do with your job performance, you know? Are you ethical in your job performance? So we need policies in place that are very specific as to if you do this infraction, you know, that's an ethics violation. If you do this, that is an ethics violation. And when somebody is caught in one of those situations that it's dealt with right then, right there and not, you know, just turned a blind eye to, I think that's kind of what got us in the position we're in right now. So we need a documented ethics policy listing every possible scenario that can happen. And we also need to train our employees, you know, and the council members as well, you know, attending the ethics classes and knowing, you know, what can get you in trouble.
Yes.
May I say something?
Only rebuttals or if it's directed and pointed at you.
No clarification point?
Uh, no, ma'am. You can do that in the closing statement. And we will move on to Elena. What policies would you support to prevent conflicts of interest for council members?
Well, I think that everyone taking an ethics class or two would be wonderful. And I think that definitely needs to be put in place. It really goes back to integrity and doing what you know is right even when no one is looking at you. I think that the policy should outline, you know, what is considered an ethics violation. However, I don't think you can list every single possible scenario because there's probably a bunch of them. But you can definitely list those and, and it needs to be gone over. The council members need to attend those ethic classes, possibly even like offer a certificate for, for attending all of the ethics classes and that sort of thing. I, I definitely think we need to work with the ethics commission on anything that they want us to do. And you should disclose any way you could possibly gain anything. Because like Ms. Brown said, this is a public service office. You're not here to gain anything. You're here to serve the citizens of Hansville. That is what this office is for and that's what it should be for. You should be here to be the hands and feet to make sure that they are taken care of and they have a voice. That should be what you gain. You gain the head, the citizens of Hansville having a voice in what's going on in their city. So I definitely agree with ethics classes for everyone. Even the employees who are going to be heads of departments or even working in those departments should have to attend those ethics classes so they kind of know what's expected of them and how to go about. If something were to arise, there needs to be policies put in place for disciplinary action and how to go about any ethics violation that there may be.
All right. Thank you so much. And for question nine, it's an audience question. Joe, this will start with you. It's kind of a lengthy question. Will you make a commitment to be at each and every community event as a city council member from grand openings, business milestones, events and so forth? And if you cannot make it, make a public statement as to why you will not be there and follow up with the local business when you're available?
Absolutely. I'm very fortunate in that I have an employer that is willing to work around my schedule, you know, when I'm elected for, to the council. So if there's a business opening, you know, or a festival or whatever, then I can adjust my work schedule to be there with that. And it's very important as a council member because if you go out to these events, like to the festivals and things, you're giving the citizens a chance to approach you in a way where it's in a more relaxed atmosphere where they're, they don't feel like they're intruding on you or anything. And business openings are so important, those ribbon cuttings, that is saying to these businesses, we welcome you and we will support you. And to not show up is, is, you know, it's just not a good face to have. So yes, absolutely, I will be at every opening, every festival and every event that I need to be at.
Thank you for that answer. Elena, same question. Like I said, it's a little lengthy. Will you make a commitment to be at each and every community event as a city council member from grand openings, business milestones, events and so forth? And if you cannot make it, make a public statement as to why you will not be there and follow up with the local business when you are available?
I, I absolutely will do my very best to be at any festival opening that we have. I may have a few children in tow, but I will be there. I love this community so much. I have no problem making a public statement if I can't be there. Majority of the time, I'm free. I do have two little ones that come with me most of the time, but I am gladly willing to be approached even with my children there and to discuss anything that anyone has. It is so important that we support the festivals, the tournaments, the grand openings in this community because again, we're setting a foundation for our children to use and to grow and to, to better Hansville whenever it comes their time. So I will definitely make every effort to be at anything that I possibly can.
Thank you. Kim? Oh, yes, sorry.
You don't have to read it again.
Okay, you're good?
I'm good. I will commit to being at any festival and grand opening that is publicly possible for me to be at. If not, I will definitely make a statement explaining why I can't be there. Most likely those statements will say something about my role as a school principal and I'm taking care of 450 other children. But the festivals are very important and it's a very important time for our community. And it's not just the council that is there. You'll see the high school cheerleaders attend, you'll see the football players attend. And that is so great for our kids and for our community. And it's great to walk those streets and see those kids interact with those other children. And it is very important to support the businesses we have. I was so excited when Valerie opened, reopened Trinkets and Traditions because those are things that are wonderful for our community and we need to support them. And I will do my very best to support them in any time that I can. And if not, I will most definitely make a statement as to why I wasn't there.
Thank you so much. Thank you all three for answering these questions. We're now going to go into closing statements. I believe I skipped the introductions. So we are going to give you three minutes on closing remarks. Okay? Elena, you will be first.
Well, I would just like to say it is an honor just to sit up here and have this opportunity. I'm so thankful that I live in America and in a country where young people have, have a chance to, you know, use our influence and our education and things like that to, to have a voice on councils in our city. I would also like to say that I'm just, I'm super excited and interested to see how this election plays out. We have some really, really amazing people running for all of the, the candidate positions and the mayor position. And so I'm, I'm really interested to see because again, I live in this city, I love this city, I'm raising my, my family here. And so I'm interested to see where Hansville goes and I hope that I get to be a part of, of moving Hansville forward. It's made such an impact on my life and I've been here most of it. So I'm, I'm so excited to watch Hansville grow and to see all of the, the new and amazing things that we can do. It's gotten such a backlash here lately and it's a great place to live and I want people to know that and I want them to remember that Hansville is a good place. There's been a lot of bad publicity, but we are good people here and we're willing to do whatever it takes to, to move Hansville forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And we will move on. Kim, you have three minutes.
I am so honored to be able to sit here again. And I'm a lifelong resident of Hansville. I grew up here. My parents bought the house that I was raised in in 1963. I was born several years later. I went to high school here. I raised my kids here. My grandkids, all but one, are being raised in this town. This town has the values and the people and the moral integrity that I want my children and grandchildren to have. You know, this town taught me to care for the people around me, to help my neighbor, to be kind to the other people around me, if someone is in need, to help them. If you think back to the tornadoes, we all pulled together, you know, we're feeding one another, we're sharing houses, we're, people are washing each other's clothes. This town has so much to offer, so much wisdom in our older generation, so much youth that's wanting to serve our community. I am just so amazed at the possibilities that are here in Hansville. And I don't think I'm finished. I believe that there are things that have happened in the last two years that it's my responsibility to stand up and say, I need to help fix that. I need to help this get right before I walk away and, and retire from the council. I want to have a good five-year plan in place, a 20-year plan so that we know where we're going, so that we know what we're doing. And I want us to do it with integrity and I want us to do it with compassion. And this town is a wonderful place. Wallace State brings so many young people into our town, so many opportunities that we need to capitalize on. I want a chance to make all that happen. I want the next four years to be the best four years for Hansville. I want us to be forward-thinking and not looking backwards. And I hope I have the opportunity to be a part of that.
Thank you for your answer. Joe?
I, like these others, I am really honored to be up here, to be running for Hansville. I've only lived in Hansville for two years and I really like this community. It has so much going for it. The downtown area, I, you know, it's just, it's a quaint little downtown. It's a historical little downtown and it needs to be developed into a historical little downtown. And I want to be a part of making Hansville downtown a historical area. I want to be a part of making Hansville grow and, you know, developing Hansville, developing the parks and, you know, building bigger parks. And I know that there, on my priority list, you know, public safety comes first and, and it kind of the trickle-down effect. But I have dogs and I go to the dog park all the time. But I have dogs and I go to the dog park all the time. I go to that, the Veterans Memorial Park all the time. And I, when I walk there, I look and I think, oh man, you know, there's so many things here that could be fixed. When I go downtown, it's like, oh man, there's so many things here that could be fixed. And I want to be a part of that solution. You know, where I came from, I was part of a solution. Where I moved from before I came to Hansville, I was part of a solution. And I want to be the same here as I want to be a part of the solution. I want to see the city grow. I want to see it grow in a controlled way and I want to see it become what it can be, this wonderful little bedroom community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, I want to thank Dr. Vicky Karwitz and Wallace State for allowing us to be here today. I want to thank all three candidates for coming and answering all the questions. Thank you so much for that. I want to thank everyone in the audience and everyone watching at home, you know, because it is important to stay involved in your government. And with that, this debate is over and we will look forward to the next debate coming up for place four. Thank you so much.